Milligan Gaines.
Here.
Martina Narcisse.
Here.
Trancoso Walker.
Here.
Barrios.
Here.
Binings.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. Announcements, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. If you, your case tonight does not go the way that you wish it to go, you can file appeal with the parish council. Public speaking is going to be five minutes each side. That's for and against, it's not each person. And three minutes additional time for rebuttal. After your case is heard, you can feel free to exit the building or stay as you like. And if you could please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Seeger and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Narcisse.
Just a point for Harold after this.
Yeah.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty and glory of this day. We pray that you continue to bless those that serve the public and ask that you guide them as they endeavor to make St. Tammany a little bit like heaven. Always mindful that the greatest resource of our parish is we, the people. We ask that you guide us tonight that we might act in the best interest of our parish and all of our endeavors. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, remembering always the amazing grace you've granted this parish. God bless St. Tammany Parish, God bless the United States of America.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever and ever justice for all.
Without objection, the chair will appoint Mr. Harold Barrios as alternate for tonight's meeting. So moved. I have the, you should, in your packet, you should have got a copy of the minutes from the April 1st meeting. Commissioner Arseneau.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as stated and written.
Got a motion to approve. Commissioner Narcisse.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Seeger, you wish to speak?
No.
Okay. Please vote. I think so. Okay, motion to approve, minutes passed. Helen, do we have any postponements?
I know it was announced earlier.
Okay, just case number two, do we need to vote on that one?
I know it was announced earlier.
Oh, sorry. It's, it's.
It was announced earlier, but 2025, the first case on the agenda, 2025-4195-ZC, has officially been withdrawn. Also, case number two, 2025-4198-ZC, there's a request to postpone for one month, but we'll have to go with the on-bid.
Okay. I need a motion to post, let's read the case into the record. Commissioner Narcisse, will you read into the record, please? Item number two.
Case number 2025-4198-ZC. Existing zoning, L1, proposed zoning, Highway Commercial 2. Location parcel is located on the north side of LA Highway 22, east of LA Highway 1085, Madisonville. S18-T7SR1OE Ward 1, District 1. Petitioner Cal Coast Properties LLC, Richard Throwbridge. Owner, Cal Coast Properties LLC, Richard Throwbridge, Council District 1.
Okay, I need a, Commissioner Robert Air.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
Okay, for how long?
For one month.
Thirty days?
Thirty days, apologize.
Or is it one month? It's one month.
One month.
Okay, Commissioner Seeger.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second to postpone. Please vote.
Motion to postpone carries.
See, you want to hit end vote, so it displays it up there, but that's okay. Okay, going to move on to item, alright, so, just since you guys all waited patiently, if without objection, I'd like to move item number six to the front of the agenda. Any, any objection? So moved, so we're going to read into the record, item number six on the agenda.
Item number six, 2025-4216-ZC. Existing zoning, L1 Large Lot Residential District. Proposed zoning, S2 Suburban Residential District. Location parcel is located at the northwest corner of US Highway 190 and Pew Road, LaCombe, Ward 4, District 7, 22.32 acres. Petitioner Shelby P. LaSalle Jr., owner Calvin and Mary Minor Jr., Council District 7.
Steph?
The applicant is requesting to rezone 22.32 acre parcel from L1 Large Lot Residential District to S2 Suburban Residential District. This property is on the corner of Highway 190 and Pew Road. If approved, the applicant could proceed with the concept plan review through the major subdivision review process and based on the growth density calculation, which does not account for the required street buffer, infrastructure, or potential unmitigated wetlands. The 22.32 acre parcel could yield up to 129 lots under the S2 Suburban District classification.
Okay. Representative? Mr. Morone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Paul Morone, on behalf of the petitioner. As Ms. Lambert noted, and as you've seen in your staff comment, we're requesting to rezone to S2 Suburban Residential District. We believe that this zoning in this location is appropriate and compatible, one, with the surrounding area, but also, two, with your 2040 plan. With regards to the surrounding area, if you look at the map that's in your, in your packet, you will see that we have two primary developments that are in our vicinity. Just to our north, down Pew Road or up Pew Road, we have Autumn Haven subdivision. Those lots are about 70 feet in width, and they're about 90 lots. All very similar to what we are proposing with the S2 zoning. If you look on your map just back to the east, you will see a larger and older subdivision, which is Forest Glen. Now, the lots in Forest Glen were originally 35 feet wide. Under the parish's contiguous lot rule, it was required that two of those lots be combined to make a building site. Many of the lots, as a result of that, in Forest Glen are 70 feet wide, the combination of the two lots. Now, there are some larger lots where more than two lots have been combined, so you do have a mix in there. But Forest Glen is not at all inconsistent with what we are proposing with this development. However, we are a much smaller development with a much smaller footprint with similar type lots. With regards to your 2040 plan, it calls for the property to be residential medium density. As you've heard me say in the past, S2 is consistent with and is actually less dense than the densities that would be allowed under the residential medium density. Ms. Lambert noted in the staff report that S2 could allow up to 129 lots, but she also qualified that to say that that doesn't take into account infrastructure, drainage, streets, and things of that nature. When you do that, under the regulations of the UDC that we have in place, the max that you can realize is really closer to three or 3.3 units an acre, and that's really maxing it out. So you're talking about 70, 72, 73 lots as a max on the site. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's not a pure math equation because of all of the infrastructure that has to go in to meet your UDC. We have already been in contact with Magnolia Water, which provides sewer and water services in this area. They have confirmed that they have capacity and capability to serve us, and we are in discussions with their attorney about having a utility services agreement put in place. With regards to drainage and flooding, this entire tract is outside of the floodplain. Under the effective zone, it is flood zone C. Under the preliminary, it is flood zone X. We are about almost three quarters of a mile from the closest repetitive loss structure. So this ground is not subject to flooding. Obviously, we will meet all drainage requirements. And in District 7, you simply don't have a whole lot of subdivisions that are coming in under the UDC, that have central utilities, that have an engineered drainage plan, and we can deliver both with this property in this location. With regards to traffic, if we are able to move through the planning process, which we hope we will, we know that a traffic study will need to be performed. That traffic study will need to be reviewed by not only St. Tammany Parish engineers, but because of proximity to Highway 190, DOTD. If it is required that improvements be made, that likely would be at Pew Road, and we know that those would be our responsibility, and we're prepared to deal with those if that is what is dictated by your staff and the traffic study. I would also point out that with any new development, there will be impact fees for both traffic and drainage that we will be paying toward the parish so that they can use those for improvements on a parish-wide level. And I wanted to point that out. We need housing in St. Tammany Parish. Our goal with this development, it's relatively small footprint, but is to offer that. I know there may be concerns about what will these houses look like? What are the values? Obviously, we're very early on, but I would tell you that it is our belief that finished lots here would be at a minimum 70,000 to 75,000. You'd have finished homes anywhere from 250 to 300 on the lower end. So you're talking about nice homes that will be a benefit to the area and to St. Tammany Parish. So we respectfully request your approval this evening. We think our plan, our proposal, is reasonable and compatible, and, and we thank you for all your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this agenda item? Okay, I have 29 cards here that, that say they wish to speak, that they're against. I have five that declared that they want to speak, and probably about 10 that are not sure. So in, in the effort to manage the time appropriately, I'm going to give everyone who wishes to speak two minutes to speak. And then each person will have an additional minute during the rebuttal period that you can come up and speak. Mr. Morone, we've got five. I'm giving a large portion of people a couple of minutes to speak, okay? Dominic Ranguso? Come on up, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Dominic Ranguso. I live at 25312 Highway 190, which is about a block away from the site. As the gentleman that said the prayer earlier, we, people who live around there, think of LaCombe as a little bit of heaven in St. Tammany Parish because of the way it is now, because we do have spacing around the housing. We're not congested. You know, many of us have grown up there, lived their whole life. Not me, I moved there from the Walling because of the way it is, the country feel it has, the way the people are and everything. I have kids there, which I wanted them to have that kind of environment, you know, where it's not congested in the cities and even in Mandeville and other areas of St. Tammany Parish. I think it's very important that we keep this area like this. For one, because we are, there's not too many of it left, and we need to appreciate the, the greenery, the trees, the environment, and everything else that we are, you know, keeping or making it better because of we're reduce, or limiting how many people can live there, how many houses can be built. And for myself and my, my children, I hope that you vote against this because we want to keep LaCombe and the area the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, James Sandifer? Doing good. State your name and address, please.
I'm James Sandifer. My address is 25460 Baptiste Road. I've lived there all my life, even when the roads was gravel roads. My great aunt used to take me on that particular property where they're trying to build houses at. And it's supposed to be sacred land where Chata Indians are buried on that property. I don't have proof of that, and I don't know how to get the proof, but, you know, from what I understand is, is sacred land. I was maybe four or five years old with my great aunt on that property at Indian burials. So, you know, it's sacred land to me and my family, you know, and we would like the land to stay as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine Meads? Janine Meads? Shane Smith? Okay. Sean Smith? Sean? Oh, gotcha. Sorry. Apologize, somebody else's handwriting is a little bit foreign to me. So Carrie Kane? Kay?
I'm Carrie Kay. I live at 305 Haven Way. Good evening. A lot was just spoken about what we were in the dark about, so, thank you. I live in Autumn Haven, nearly across Pew Road from the site proposed consideration for the new development. I'm here tonight to express concerns, not to oppose growth, but to advocate for a smart and responsible development that protects existing communities. At this time, we've received very limited information about what is being proposed, except for tonight. That uncertainty alone is creating a great deal of concern. I see that the proposed is S2 Suburban Residential District, which is designed to support moderate-density residential development. This zoning classification permits a variety of residential uses, including single-family homes, duplexes, townhouses, and certain multifamily residency. Additionally, specifically non-residential uses, such as community homes, daycares, and may be allowed uncertain conditions. It appears this project is moving forward without clarity addressing important questions. What exactly is being built? How many units are planned? And what about the density? What type of housing will be rental, single-family, subsidized, or mixed use? The infrastructure improvements will be made to support the additional load, drainage, and roadways. How will traffic be managed? But they did go over that briefly. Will there be environmental or engineering assessments done before approval? How will emergency services, schools, and utilities be impacted? Has a development engaged with nearby residents to discuss the project's scope and impact? Our neighborhood is a working-class community, affordable, stable, and proud.
That's, that's all your time, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, you can come back during the rebuttal period.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a, a number of cards here that did not mark which, that, which, if they wanted to speak. David Locker? Yours to speak?
Yeah, my name's David Locker, 168 Autumn Woods Drive. I concur with Ms. Kay. We didn't know a whole lot about what was the scope of comments. I noticed on the cards that there was nothing to be mentioned about infrastructure or anything of the like. But I noticed that the other side had brought that up on a kind of a gloss over aspect. I would just ask you to, in deciding this case, I would ask you to give a whole lot of weight to the prior existing zoning decision that was made at the time it was made. There was likely a lot more planning that went into that, and I would just ask you to, to put a lot of weight into that. And I imagine that there'll be further discussion. I was told that this is the very front end of discussion around this, without going into any infrastructure problems or things like that. A, a large lot residential district in that area in 22 acres, given it one acre lots, would lead to 15 or 20 homes approximately. And that would be a lot different than having 70-foot lots on possibly 20 acres. A completely different situation there. So I would ask you to, to vote against rezoning this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian Cookman?
Brian Cookman, 61173 Pew Road. There's a whole lot going on here. Nothing that's been explained very well to the people that live in Autumn Haven, Pew Road, and the surrounding area. Right now, the infrastructure is not very well, especially on Pew Road. The road in and out, traffic is horrible. Flooding issues, we have a zone C right now because of the wetlands around us. Once you start tearing the wetlands down, it no longer becomes a flood C, flood zone C. We also have property taxes that went up. Mine doubled, what happens with the property taxes after all these new homes are established, who absorbs the cost of all that environmental impact fee? There's a whole lot to this that has to be taken into consideration. If you take 190 and go towards Mandeville right now, the entrance to Castine Center, or the, the Salt Road that was put in, there's no light there. I know they have to have police officers direct traffic on weekends for the games. Now you're just establishing, or introducing, I guess, that much more traffic. So it would have been nice to have some sort of pamphlet, what was going on, what was going exactly to be done with infrastructure, what was going to be done with the roads? The ditches haven't been dug or taken care of in, I don't know how long, you know? So what happens with this? Do we now turn into a flood zone C? Or I mean to a flood zone where we're going to need insurance now? So is something like this going to be, I don't know, generated in access to the public? So that's my question for you, and I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Tim Ruth?
Good evening, good evening. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to make a statement, and I'd also like to thank y'all for serving your community. And I'd like to make, you know, of course, make a statement not in support of, of the rezoning. And I'd like to, the council, to consider that some things in life, wealth and prosperity, aren't always measured in our bank accounts, and they're measured in our quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Muthrie?
Hello, ladies, ladies and gentlemen of the council. James Muthrie, I live at 25402 Highway 190 and have a house at 61635 Bruneman Road. Lived in Big Branch since 1988 and grew up in Old Metairie. And back in that time, in the 50s, Old Metairie was shell roads and ditches and real country. And that's evolved over time to big house next to big house. And, you know, just not the same place that it was, like they say in a song. Street signs are the same, but everything else has changed. I, I just think that, you know, the, the greater space between houses and things is a, a luxury or a way of life that we've come to understand in St. Tammany Parish. And, you know, I'm for, you know, development, but on a smaller level, to where there is that space already that will remain between places and between subdivisions and between, you know, areas. And that's been unique to St. Tammany and to Big Branch. And I wish to, you know, have that continue in the future. So I'm against any sort of, you know, developments without being in specifics. So thank y'all very, very much.
Thank you. Jason, Jason Suiz?
Good evening. My name is Jason Sines. I live at 309 Haven Way. I am here tonight to express that I'm against this project. First of all, because we didn't have any information specifics about it. But not only that, it's because the woods between Pew Road and 190, they serve as a buffer, as a buffer against road noise from Highway 190. It also worries me that if this project is approved, we're going to have a loss in ecological, you know, diversity in the area. And I just worry that right now, the Pew Road is too narrow for two-way traffic. I mean, sometimes I'm going to work in the morning, there's a trash truck coming, I have to almost get on the ditch so that that truck can, can go by. So traffic and several other, you know, factors that come with, with, with that saturation of homes, almost 80 houses, I think is just an overload on our community. And I would really hate to lose that buffer zone in my area. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Hin? Or Scott Castellon? Okay, the rest of the cards I have, do not wish to speak. Is anyone that I wanted to speak that I did not call on? Okay? Just state your name and, and address, and then please get a speaker card and fill it out at the end of your statement.
I wasn't expected to speak tonight, but I am. My husband, my name is Villis McGee, and my husband and I, we live at 62026 Vista, which is off of Pew. And we bought our property about 15 years ago under the impression that, that we have to have an acre plus, and that we wanted that environment. And if they build that big old subdivision, you know, we was lied to because we was under the impression that there was zoning that had to be our acre plus. And I, I vote against that subdivision being there. And not only for that, you know, what about the li, you know, wildlife, the wildlife? Where they gonna go? Where they gonna be pushed to? What about the water and flood? Because when it rains at our house, sometimes the water is sizzed there, and it takes a while. So I'm very against it, okay?
Okay.
I thank y'all for y'all time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go, come on up, ma'am.
I have a card up there already.
Okay, what was your name?
Jenny Lazo.
Okay.
And I'm at 104 Autumn Woods Drive. So they've pretty much touched on just about everything, but something to consider is especially the drainage and the water utilities. Right now, in a heavy rain, we get our pond overfills. It covers Pew Road. The ditches don't drain. Same with the water. We're supposed to have a, a certain amount of water reserves, and they don't have that. We lose water pressure in the evenings when everybody's home. So consider our utilities as well. We, we just don't have the support there to, to support another neighborhood, so I just want to speak against it, too.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak? Did you fill out a card already?
I did.
Okay, what's your name?
My name is Eric Mahalik.
State your name and address for me.
Eric Mahalik, 453 Autumn Haven Circle. I put on that card I did not wish to speak, but I do now that I heard what he had to say. Especially about water, in three different variations. One, the rain has already been stated. I'm very concerned about the land that now could absorb all of the rain and runoff is going to be paved over with houses, houses and roads. Two, we get our water from Magnolia. And he mentioned that Magnolia says they have the capacity to, to support all of these new houses, and they don't have the capacity to support the houses they already serve. And three, wastewater. Where does it go? Again, Magnolia takes care of that, but again, I'm very concerned about the capacity about that. And then it was also brought up about the trees being a buffer of the road noise. I appreciate the quiet and the solitude that I get to experience at night, and I'm very afraid that I'll be listening to the trucks zooming by. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak and, and against? Sir? Did you fill out a speaker card already, sir? Okay, just get one after you're, after you're done. State your name and address for me.
Richard Smith. I live at 62082 Warrior Drive. And, uh, we came to a similar meeting when Autumn Haven came in, and there were assurances that the structure would be taken care of, that Pugh would have a shoulder on it, that they would address the drainage problems. None of that happened when the subdivision went in. I wanna know how we can get assurances, if this does happen, that they will do what is promised. And also, I mean, we do live in a democracy, and I don't see anybody here saying they want this. You only have people here in disapproval of it. I'd just like to point that out.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Mer- Mr. Marone, I'm gonna turn this over to the rebuttal time. Now, just to explain to the audience, if this is your first time here, um, when we have uh, various members for and against, uh, we do have to, we do, as, as a mandate, have to provide equal time, okay? So, I was calculating out the time there, so we are gonna add some time to Marone's, uh, Mr. Marone's rebuttal time, if he wishes, uh, just to compensate for the, the time that everyone that was against took. Does that make sense? Okay. Mr. Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the extra time. I was, I was gonna ask you for it, so I, I do appreciate that. Uh, but I'll try to, try to be brief. Uh, a few things that we heard, um, uh, one, uh, it was suggested a number of times that, you know, we should leave it like it is. And, uh, I don't say this to be argumentative, but respectively, you know, my client does have some right to, to use the property, to access the property, and to develop the property in some manner. And, and that's his, that's his goal. His goal is to do that, and he has some of those rights, as long as he will do it under the UDC. Now, um, the idea that we should have larger lots, uh, that we should have acre plus lots, as I've said before, and I'll say it again respectfully, you cannot deliver under our UDC acre lots that have the central utilities, that have all of the infrastructure that has to come into it. It's, uh, it's just not feasible for us to do that. But I will say this, your UDC does build in a lot of protections. There was a concern, um, about the trees. Yes, there were gonna be trees removed from this site. If it were one-acre sites, there were gonna be trees removed from this site. But this development under your UDC will have buffers along the entire perimeter. Is that perfect? No. But that's what the UDC calls for, and that's what we're prepared to do. There were a lot of speakers that were from Autumn, Autumn Haven, uh, which is a very nice development. Um, but to be honest, we're not proposing anything that's any different than Autumn Haven. It's very consistent, very compatible with both Autumn Haven and Forest Glen, which are the developments that, that are immediately adjacent to us or in our very near vicinity. So, we're not, we're not, um, dropping this where there's nothing else like it. In fact, we are dropping this in a location that's very similar to what's there. And I ask you to consider that. There were concerns about Pugh Road. We will have to do a traffic impact analysis that will dictate what has to happen at Pugh Road. But I would point out that our driveway is likely to be 300 or 300 feet off a highway, 350 feet off of Highway 190. So, we're not talking about, uh, traffic that is gonna be moving further back into, into Pugh Road. Uh, if improvements are needed at that intersection, we are prepared to do it. We'll be mandated to do it. With regards to the process, I'm sorry that, um, you know, that, that a lot of the residents didn't have information, and, and I respect that concern that they expressed. But I do think it's, it's important that, that we explain what the process is, and I know you know that, but I think it's important for the public to hear it. This is zoning. Even if this is approved this evening, there are a number of steps that have to take place, and a number of additional public hearings and information provided before any work could be done. There are two steps in particular. We have to have a site plan, we have to have engineering done, we have to have a traffic study done. All of these details get filled in at later steps, but before any work can commence. So, there is some concern that, well, what about the drainage? Well, this, I'm telling you, the drainage is gonna comply, but rightfully, some of the residents wanna know that it's gonna comply. I understand that. And I, I wanna make sure they understand that your process under the UDC provides for the, for that, um, that, that process to make sure that engineering is submitted, that engineering is reviewed, that traffic is submitted, that traffic is reviewed. And then there are public hearings on all of that, that gives the opportunity for the public to hear it, to be educated, and to, to continue to object if they feel like that is what they wanna do. But all of that is already built in, you know? Um, there was also some suggestion, uh, or question about what is the S2, and is there gonna be multifamily, or what, what, what are the uses that are gonna be there? Um, this project is a single-family residential project. There will be single-family residential homes on individual lots. There is no multifamily. Multifamily is not permitted, uh, under the S2 zone. It's a single-family residential zone, and that's all that would be there. You would have single-family lots. I would tell you, this is not exact, but you're probably looking, you know, 70, in the low 70s, at the maximum lot count on this, all single-family, uh, all single-family, uh, homes. Um, you know, as far as the drainage goes, again, I would just simply say that, um, to the best of our knowledge, on what we have been able to ascertain, um, there are no wetlands on this site. The flood zone is C today. It is X. Your requirements say that we have to capture and reduce the rate of runoff by 25% in a hundred-year storm event. So, when there is concern about what is this site, if developed, going to do to the surrounding properties, your code requires that we reduce the runoff by 25% from the condition that it is now. So, the only way we can do that is to have these large detention ponds to make sure that we can comply. With regards to Magnolia Water, they are the provider in the area. We don't regulate them, you don't regulate them, but they are regulated, uh, by the state. Um, and they have told us they have capacity. To the extent that improvements need to be made to their system to accommodate us, including line extensions, adding capacity, then that is, that is our obligation. We have to do that at our cost. We're prepared to do that at our cost. But what can't happen with an S2 development is that we can't pursue, uh, the development of it without central utilities. So, the fear that, well, they may not actually have central utilities, they may have individual septic tanks, they may have individual wells, that is not an option. That is not an option. And so, uh, we will, we are mandated to have it, we will have it. We have all already started the process, uh, to do that. And, and we will do whatever is necessary, uh, to make sure that capacity is there at our cost, and to comply with the requirements that are before us. Um, you know, these processes that you have are, are onerous, uh, to us, uh, we believe respectfully. Um, I understand the residents feeling like, hey, we didn't, you know, we, we didn't know any of this until we got here tonight. And again, I, as I said earlier, I, I respect that, and I, I understand their concerns. Um, but this is a multi-step process. This is just the first of many. This is just about the use, the issues of drainage, of traffic, of all of these other issues. There are stages where those studies are required, um, and we will get to those if we are able to, uh, to pursue that process. We ask for your approval this evening, based on the land use, based on that we are asking for S2, that is consistent and compatible with Autumn Haven, that is consistent and compatible with Forest Glen. Those are the primary developments in the area. This is a location that is suited for this type of development, with the infrastructure that's there, with the infrastructure that we can bring to it, and that it will be compatible. And so, we urge you to please consider all this in your decision-making process, and at the appropriate time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this is the rebuttal time for the members of the audience who are spoken against. Um, I would like to give everybody a little bit more chance to speak. Instead of creating a shared pool that you have to share, I am gonna give, uh, one minute for rebuttal time. So, anybody would like, like to come up and speak, um, please come to the podium.
Hi, Jenny Lazo again. So, um, I understand that it's very similar to Autumn Haven, and I think that's part of the problem. Our neighbors, uh, that surround Autumn Haven have been negatively impacted by our neighborhood. So, we see those properties now flooding. We see the drains now backing up. We see that the water capacity can't be supported. Um, so I, I don't think it's a positive thing that it's like Autumn Haven. Autumn Haven impacted the areas around us, you know, and, and we don't like it for our neighbors. So, we definitely don't want it to further impact them or impact us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir? Just come on up, just get, then get ready to come up next, okay?
Hey, thanks again.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, urge the council, and also urge the owner and potential developer, uh, to consider staying within the current zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
So, again, like you stated, we didn't get any information on what's going to go with this structure. How far is it gonna be on 190? How far back is it coming on Pugh Road? Where are the entrances gonna be? Is it just gonna be an entrance on 190, or are Pugh Road, multiple entrances? Um, like we stated before, you know, that's not gonna be able to handle this excess traffic. Um, is there gonna be any information given to the public that we can look at?
So, I can, I can answer that for you, sir, just, uh, you know, so we don't have to go the back and forth here. So, no, no, stay right there. So, it's a, uh, this is the zoning meeting. So, this just changes the land use portion, and then the planning stages, when all of those, uh, plans and designs, you know, road use, all of that would be, come about. Now, I understand that sometimes it looks like a cart before the horse type of thing, but this is the way the parish has designed this process to go. So, this is just to decide whether this is an appropriate land and use for that particular area.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Janine Meads. I own the property immediately across 190 from the property in question, uh, to be rezoned. And I have owned that property for a long, long time. I have almost six acres, if you go up and down. Sorry, I just drove in from Memphis to be here, and I'm just kinda breathless. Um, if you drive, if you go up and down that area, these are large lots, estates. The people that have been there for many, many years have invested many of them their life savings. They're not living on 70,000 square feet. And we know what workhouse zoning looks like, or workforce zoning looks like. All you have to do is go down toward La Combe into the tree streets, and you'll see what that kinda housing looks like. That's why the residents of this area are opposed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up, ma'am.
I'm Nicole Ford. I live at 25480 Running Bear Drive. Um, I actually moved from the South Shore six years ago, and we moved from the South Shore to be in this area because of the space it provides. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Mr. LaSalle mentioned that the owners have a right to improve their product, their property. I agree, um, as it is. If you wanna build large lots, where you have smaller, uh, less dwellings per acre, that's fine. That'll be much less of an impact than what he's proposing for the rest of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Narcisse?
Well, we've heard a lot of opposition to this matter. Um, I, I can, I for one, uh, as most of you know, I'm, I'm the guy in La Combe, apparently. That's what I always get told, but, um, I can tell you that Pugh Road cannot, cannot handle the infrastructure with the amount of housing there. So, there will have to be that traffic study and some improvements on Pugh Road. The infrastructure, as far as, uh, drainage, is horrible back there. Um, I know for a fact that you had the one acre that Ms. McGee talked about, you had the one acre moratorium and things of that nature, to where they were sold those lots, saying that, hey, you had to have one acre minimums. I know things changed, to your perspective, to your point. Um, Magnolia Water, we all have our headaches with Magnolia Water in general. Um, that is something that I wish we could wave a magic wand to. Um, there's a whole lot of concerns here, and it sounds like an information concern. Um, as far as the residents, all of the residents that are here, not having a clear concept. I don't think there's ill intent on either side. I think Mr. La- Mr. LaSalle wants to build something sustainable, and I think the, the community would like to see something sustainable. I think there's a, a balance that can be made. Um, going from L1 to S2 is a huge increase in density. I've made that argument multiple times here in this commission. I think there's some things in between, S1, L2, maybe, that there can be a conversation about. And I think that conversation comes inside of a community meeting, if both sides are applicable for that. Um, I know we're early as far as planning is concerned, but I know Mr. LaSalle has great intentions, but what happens if it's sold to another person and then it becomes S2? There's a lot of things of that nature that we have to take into, uh, effect here. And I think a community meeting where we can get everybody in the same room, come to some agreement, come to some, where it's not a shock and awe type thing, I think everybody will be amicable to that. And my move is to postpone for a month, so that we can get that community meeting taking place, and get all on the same page and move together forward. Cause I, I, I don't think that there's any negative to development in the area. I think we just have to get everybody on the same page as to what that development looks like. So, my move is to...
Motion, motion from Commissioner Narcisse to postpone for one month. Commissioner Robert?
Thank you. Um, before I give my opinion on the postponement, which, yeah, um, a few things. So, first of all, we approved in February of this year, two overlays for the La Combe and Slidell areas, District 7 and 11, the resiliency overlays. These are, um, additions to our existing zoning map that would essentially require a higher standard, um, for new construction in the area. This particular property was not included in that overlay for R O, apologize, for R O2, um, which has not gotten through the council as of yet. From what I, my understanding is that there's still some work to be done on the District 11, uh, resiliency over, I'm sorry, the District 7 resiliency overlay number two. My concern with this is that we just addressed all of the drainage issues and the infrastructure issues in this area just in February, and we passed those overlays. Even though this parcel is not included, I just pulled everything up. Everything to the north is, is, or has the resiliency overlay in it, because it's in a flood zone. From a development standpoint, this property is four to, anywhere from three to five feet on any given spot, above the base flood elevation. It is high and dry. This ideally would be a wonderful place for a subdivision, however, that also means that because it sits on a hill, it's gonna flood a lot of things around it. So, I was going to suggest postponement regardless, simply because I would like to see the rest of the information that comes from the R O2 study area in District 7, before that gets finalized by the council. Additionally, this area is still under a moratorium for construction permits, and it doesn't expire, I believe, until sometime in July of this year. And has it been, has it been renewed? Can anybody?
It's staff.
Staff. Um, can anybody confirm if the moratorium, the construction moratorium in this area's been lifted, or if it's gonna be reinstated come July?
I believe it was renewed last month, but I'll look into it and let you know.
Okay, thank you. So, I would, actually, I, I love the community meeting, but I don't know if, I mean, I know, I, I did ask Ross, we, we're looking at a few months for the new resiliency overlay two for District 7. We, we're looking at a few months for the new resiliency overlay two for District 7, that new study area work to be done. I would feel much more comfortable approving this or denying it based on the data that we have, that the consulting firm has worked with. We, I had a two-hour Google Meet Zoom call with the consultant and floodplain manager, parish staff in February regarding this, and I think it is, I think it, we would not be doing ourselves any favors to wait, I'm sorry, to postpone this for one month. I think we should postpone until that is complete. I'm not exactly sure how that motion would need to go.
You have a motion on the floor for one month? Do you wish to second?
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Seeger, I see that you wish to speak. We have a motion on the floor.
I have a question for staff. Mr. Baptiste, I believe it was, brought up a point about an archaeological site. What does the parishes stand on, if it is proven to be an archaeological site, what happens?
That's a good question. I guess we would have to do some research in that regards.
I can answer that.
That's all.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone. We're going to see, hear that motion now, so please vote.
Motion to postpone, motion to postpone for one month. Carries.
Motion is postponed, so let me explain this to everyone in the audience. So, means that it's going to be pushed to the agenda for, for this meeting for next month. Mr. Morone, at his discretion, can get with staff and set up a, a, a community meeting. So, if you wish, you can communicate with Mr. Morone about when that meeting may take place.
Mr. Chairman, are you trying to schedule a community meeting where the commissioners would be attending as well, or you want to let?
Is that, is that for us to do?
Well, we can, at this time, we can attend.
Mr. Morone, could you come to the microphone, please?
Yes, sir.
It's been postponed for a month. Would you like to schedule a community meeting?
Yes, yes, we're happy to participate.
We will attempt to schedule this meeting on June 17th, which is the third Tuesday of the month. It would start at 6:00 PM. Everyone, June 17th? Okay, June 24th?
So, everybody that got a, everybody that got a speaker card will get a communication?
Yes.
So, everybody that put in a speaker card will get a communication about the community meeting?
So, we're scheduled right now for June 24th, and would you like to appoint some of the commissioners to attend?
Commissioner Narcisse will attend. Commissioner Robert and Commissioner Truckcello.
Okay, thank you. So, everyone who have filled out a speaker card, we will send an email. If you did not include your email on, on a card, you're welcome to contact us. You can email me personally at hlambert@stpgov.org, or you can email planning@stpgov.org. If I spoke a little too fast, you're welcome to call our office as well. We'll be happy to provide you that information. If you're writing it down, hlambert@stpgov.org, or planning@stpgov.org.
Thank you all very much. If you, you can leave if you like, if you don't want to sit for the rest of the meeting.
Is that for the community meetings? Yes.
Thank you.
That must be the owner standing with them.
Yeah. Wait, oh, you're number seven? Come back up to the top, sorry. It's going to be quick, though. It'll be quick. It'll be quick. Yeah, yeah.
Number three, we'll let him be the three.
It's, for me, it's like, do I make everybody wait, or do I try to clear it out as? Yeah, exactly. And I apologize, we have to give it just a minute because I have to have all the seats filled here, so. Rennie? Who we missing? Garen?
He's socializing.
Garen and Harold.
Three. Where's your seats?
Garen.
Did you try to mess with?
You begged to be messed with.
Give her a hard time.
John's like, Garen, get over here! And he's not even here!
I knew it. I could sense his coming back. All right. We are moving back to item number three on the agenda. Commissioner Narcisse, please read.
Item number three, 2025-4203-ZC, existing zoning, L1 large lot residential district, proposed zoning, L1 large lot residential district and manufactured housing overlay. Location parcel located on the west side of Beverly Drive, north of Lake Ramsey Road, Covington, Ward 3, District 3, 4.95 acre. Petitioner Teresa O'Brien. Owner Teresa O'Brien and Council District 3.
Staff?
The objective of the request is to allow to rezone this 4.95 acre parcel of land to manufactured housing overlay with the objective of placing a manufactured home on the property.
Thank you. Are you Ms. O'Brien?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Do you have anything to add?
No.
No? Just, just want to put a mobile home on a lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor?
My name's Michael Dell. Live at 76061 Beverly Drive, right next door to Teresa's property. I moved there in January of 1980, so I have a lot of history with that area. Prior to Teresa buying the property, it was owned by hoarders, and I had a 35-year fight. And the only thing I can explain is what I went through was either complete incompetence by zone enforcement code officers, or the property owner knew somebody and could get things stopped.
So, you happy they're gone?
Yes, yes. To give you an idea, I won't take up too much time, but to give an idea how bad the property was, they actually tried to put it for sale, and at the time, someone came over to me and asked me about it because they saw me working in my yard, they wanted to know more information. And that person counted 21 junk cars just on this first acre, and that's how bad it was. There was two trailers shaped like an L that weren't lived in since Katrina. They were caved in, totally destroyed, all kinds of critters over there. It was a nightmare. And the only thing I could do is have a wall of Agustum on one side of my property and bamboo on the other side to block everything out. Since Teresa bought the property, she has worked her butt off to get that place looking nice. I'm so proud of the work that she's done, because it was hard. I know it was hard because it was a mess. I mean, a total mess. So, I'm definitely in favor. She's going to be a great neighbor, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak against? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Osmont?
I think it's even great to, to hear from my neighbor in favor of something like that as well, and I would move to accept as, as presented to us.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Osmont, Commissioner Seeger?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Truckcello?
I'll say about thirty.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion to approve. Carries.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda.
2025-4211-ZC, existing zoning...
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to, did you vote on a previous?
Yeah, we did. We did a vote. It passed. It's gone now. Unanimous.
We had a quorum approved.
Was no, was there, there was no amendments or anything on it, right?
No, we just needed it for the record.
Okay. For the record. Go ahead, Mr. Narcisse.
Existing zoning, large, large lot residential district, proposed zoning, L1 large lot residential district and manufactured housing overlay. Location parcel located on the west side of LA Highway 437, south of H Cox Road, Covington, Ward 3, District 2, 0.84 acres. Petitioner David Ape, owner David and Alicia Ape, Council District 2.
Staff?
The objective of the request is to allow for a manufactured housing overlay on a 0.84 acre parcel. If the manufactured housing overlay request is approved, then it will allow the owner to apply for a building permit for the manufactured home that is on the property.
Okay, is a petitioner, David or Alicia Ape here? Yes, sir? Your name?
Yeah, my name's David Appy. Actually, I live at...
Appy, sorry about that.
Appy, yeah. 75085, Highway 437 in Covington. I purchased that property in March of 2002. There is a mobile home on it currently, very small, 560 square feet. Somehow throughout the years, the mobile home overlay was removed from the property, so now it's just an L1. I would like to expand the living area, whether it be a guest house or add to it, and that's why I'm requesting the mobile home overlay, to keep it in effect, to try to just stay in compliance.
Did, did you lose your electricity to the home?
No, sir.
No, it's been in, in constant use the whole time? Hasn't been derelict at all?
No, not at all. I'm just trying to stay in compliance and get the proper paper, permits.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? Okay. Have you filled out a speaker card, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. State your name.
My name is Mark Shaw. I live at 75095, right next to Mr. Appy. He is in practice. There are two trailers on that property, and they're both being rented out at this very moment. There's also a shop that he has in the back, and I don't know how you can have a, a trailer that was moved onto this property last year illegally and is still sitting there that's being rented out, and now he wants to change the zoning so he can actually put electric to this house that already has trailers on it. I've lived on this property next to him since 1992, and when he moved in over there and bought the little section of acreage out of my property, which was a five acre, and he has the 8.4 tenths of it. So, I would ask you not to allow him to rezone this for basically rental properties is what he wants to use it for. These trailers are no more than about 25 feet away from my trailer, and last year I had lots of complaints of these renters that were inside these trailers, all to a point where I called the police, and they just told me that he couldn't do anything until 10 o'clock at night where they could do something for that. So, I would ask you all not to allow him to change the zoning on this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Appy, this is rebuttal time for you. If you wish to come forward and, and speak.
I do understand his concerns. However, I am within the boundaries and the proper setbacks. Like I mentioned before, that mobile, the one mobile home has been there since I purchased the property. I am in compliance, and I don't see where he's affected. He has called about a noise ordinance, which I took care of, and it does not go past the laws of 10 o'clock curfews. That has been addressed. Other than that, I did advise him to call the Sheriff's Department. So, those, the people that were living there were some tenants of mine. They no longer live there, so I thought that issue was resolved, but...
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against? Bring it back to the commission. Do you want, did you want to speak again, sir, about, you have a rebuttal period if you wish to refute anything or speak again? Sorry, thanks.
I understand. I just, I lived on this property for a long time, and he has been a little bit shady on moving things onto the property illegally, okay? So, and I had called the parish and the zoning commission down to go down there to turn him in, and I, to this day, still have not heard anything about this, okay? I just want to reiterate that I wish no for this.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert?
Thank you both for coming. I am not in favor of this for a few reasons. While there are existing manufactured housing units on this property, there don't appear to be any manufactured housing overlay, I'm sorry, parcels with the overlay on them within at least a square mile of this property. Additionally, it does front on Lee Road. I mean, I grew up in Covington, and I'm pretty sure for, at least through college, I had a sticker on the back of my car that says, "Pray for me, I drive Lee Road." So, you know, this property is only 0.84 acres, so it's already considered a non-conforming lot of record. Is that correct, Helen? Because it does not meet the L1 zoning district requirement of one, so it's already kind of outside of its, the zoning district for the area because it's a non-conforming lot of record. So, I would have to make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Commissioner Seeger?
Mr. Appy, I have a question for you. The second...
Mr. Appy, come forward, please.
A second manufactured home was moved onto the property, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I purchased one last year and...
Does it have a separate electrical service on it?
No, sir, not right now.
It has the same service, is using the same services?
I have it tied into the existing one temporarily, just to keep things maintained, keep it from molding and building. Yes, it is currently powered off of the original mobile home.
So, basically, you have two separate rental units there?
Yes, sir. Right, yeah, one, I think there's pictures of it, yeah, one behind the other.
I have a question for staff. Is that permitted to have two services for two separate dwellings using one service?
No, the mobile home was moved onto the property, and, you know, the owner is now attempting to go through the zoning change process to be able, if it's approved, to be able to apply for a building permit.
Correct. We're just, I'm just trying to stay in compliance to have it stay there. Yeah, to get, get the proper meter and proper permits.
I'm going to second my fellow commissioners' denial request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Osmont?
Yeah, well, first of all, I would have definitely gone into the second for the denial. My concern to staff or to the gentleman that lives close to the proximity of this property is that it seems to be a code issue and code enforcement, and I would encourage any citizen as well as the one that's already come up and spoken...
You can sit down, sir.
The one that's come up and spoken already and has attempted to, to get some issues resolved over there, I definitely think that code enforcement needs to be looking at that because how can you have one service line to two property, to two mobile homes there? And I know his reasoning to it, but that's a little, to me, that's a little dangerous. But anyway, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Truckcello?
We have an issue here. He has a trailer there now. How long a trailer's been there? We have an issue here. He has a trailer there now. How long a trailer's been there?
Come up, sir.
Come on up.
The original mobile home was there on the property in 2002, when I purchased the property.
So he has a trailer on a piece of property that's nonconform... Is that correct, Helen?
I'm not... I'm not sure if we're speaking about the same. However, you know, we are aware that there's a mobile home that was moved onto the property without a permit, and, you know, the owner is here to attempt to, you know, rezone the property so he would be able to apply for that building permit.
Yes, that is correct. The second was moved on the end of last year.
Yeah, and I'm not worried about the second one. I'm worried about the... About the first one.
The first one, yeah, it's always been there.
Been there 2002.
Grandfather had it.
And there's no mobile home overlay, correct?
There was when I purchased the property. Since then, it has gone away. I don't know when or why.
Staff, is that correct?
Well, in 2002, the property was more than likely zone rural, which at the time we allowed for mobile homes under the rural zoning.
Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second to deny. You wish to speak again, Commissioner?
Yeah, let me get one. And maybe it has already been answered. I don't know. L1 is one dwelling per acre. There's two dwellings on .84 acres. That confuses me.
It allows you to have a guest house on the property.
So we're considering one of the mobile homes that is sharing power, a guest house?
Well, not as of right now because it's... No permit has been issued.
Gotcha.
I have a question for staff. So are you allowed to rent out the guest house if neither... If neither residence is your primary residence? You can have a... You could have a house and a guest house, but one of them has to be your primary residence, correct?
As far as rentals over 30 days, the parish doesn't get involved with long-term rentals. If it meets short-term rental standards and has the applicable zoning required for that, then we get involved as a short-term rental, but you don't have to live on the property.
That's a cool loophole. I'll exploit that one. Thanks. All right. We have a motion and a second. You want...
I'm sorry. I apologize, guys. So as it stands right now, if something happens to his power, the power pole goes down, he can't get electricity again, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. To deny. The motion is to deny. Motion carries. Okay, moving to item number five on the agenda. Commissioner Narcisse?
Yeah.
Yep.
2025-4215, ZC, existing zoning S1 suburban rural district, residential district, proposed zoning S1 suburban residential district and MHO manufactured housing overlay location parcel located on the northwest corner of Eden Street and Spruce Street, Covington, Ward 3, District 2, .32 acres. Petitioner Kevin Myers, owner Vernon Newton, Council District 2.
Staff?
The subject property is currently developed with an existing manufactured home, which is considered a non-conforming use. This means that it was an existing manufactured home on the property. The property doesn't have the correct zoning, which is the manufactured housing overlay. The electricity to the manufactured home got turned off for longer than six months, so now instead of being a legal non-conforming use, it's now just a non-conforming use, which is why they're coming to you asking for the correct zoning. The subject site is bordered by residentially zoned property to the north and east, and then to the west by property zoned S1 suburban district. The property to the east is zone four and developed with a manufactured home. There are various parcels within the subdivision and the adjacent subdivision that have received the MHO manufactured housing overlay zoning classification over the years. If approved, the applicant can apply for an electrical connection to obtain electricity to the existing manufactured home.
Is the petitioner here? Come on up, sir. You, Mr. Myers? Yep, thank you, sir. You have anything to add?
No, I just was trying to get some lights turned on so we can get some work done in the place so we can eventually sell it if we can get rid of it. My mother used to stay there. She got sick and moved, so...
I understand.
My brother and I want to try to fix it up and do something with it instead of letting it sit there and just go down.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Seeger.
Mr. Myers? How... About how old is the manufactured home that's on the site?
I really don't know. She bought it, and we put it on that land, and she's been staying there ever since. It's not... It had work done on it, you know?
Does it still have wheels on it?
Yes, I believe it do.
Okay. I just wanted to make you aware that the parish has some rules about manufactured housing that you would have to comply with. One is removing wheels. I believe the other one is putting skirt around it. I believe the other one's taking the tongue off so it's not readily movable, and are you willing to comply with the rules at the St. Tammany Parish?
Whatever we need to do, we're willing to do it. We did... We did put skirting around it. It has skirting around it. I just have to, you know, then they weave it by the skirt and they tear it up. I gotta just replace some of that, and I got a guy gonna cut the tongue off.
Okay.
So we can take the wheels off if that's what you want us to do, whatever it takes.
I just want to get with the staff, and they will give you the list of things that are required. I move to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Seeger, Commissioner Arsomont?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? No further discussion. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Item. Guys.
Additionally, I just wanted to let you know, please make sure you reach out to the permit office and speak with floodplain about what elevation it needs to be at because manufactured housing does have a different standard than stick-built or slab-on-grade residences. So just make sure, because it's... You said your mom lived there. I'm assuming she was probably there for quite some time. The standards for that may have changed. So just reach out and make sure that you've got the finished floor at the right height. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven on the agenda.
Item number seven, 2025-4219, ZC, existing zoning R2 rural residential district, proposed zoning R2 and manufactured housing overlay location parcel is located on the south side of Pichon and on the west side of 22nd Street, LaCombe, Ward 7, District 7, 1.06 acres. Petitioner Donjanay Casborn, owner Donjanay Casborn, Council District 7.
Staff?
The subject site is currently undeveloped. The neighborhood is developed with a mixture of single-family, sick-built structures and manufactured homes, and per the petitioner's application, the reason for the request is to apply for a building permit for the placement of a manufactured home.
You have anything to add?
I'm 26. I'm a single mother. I'm a teacher, and I've been looking for a house for over a year, and the only thing that I can afford is a manufactured home for me and my daughter. So if y'all could approve this for me, that would be... Y'all would probably make me cry, but that would be greatly appreciated so that we can get our own house. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Any one wish... Any audience wish to speak in favor? Who wouldn't? Anyone against? Okay, bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Truckzilla.
Ma'am, would you come up, please?
Yes, sir.
What do you teach?
I teach kindergarten. At Mayfield Elementary in Slado.
Bless you. Bless you.
What? Go Bears! Are you kidding me?
Bless you.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Truckzilla, Commissioner Arsomont.
Well, it's an easy second, of course, and we wish you nothing but the best, and we always want young families to have that dream, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Narcisse?
I've got a quick question for staff. I see that is R2, but the acreage is 1.06. R2 is typically three. Is there any kind of...
Just grandfathered in. She's gonna combine all the lots together and make it a parcel of land.
10-4. Gotcha. Okay. Commissioner Robert?
Oh, thank you for your service to our community. My son just had his kindergarten ceremony. I was just gonna say, same thing. Just make sure you contact permits just for... To make sure it's something with the chassis. I don't know. I'm a CFM, but I don't deal with manufactured housing of it. So just contact the permit office, and they'll help walk you through everything you need to know, and they'll let you know, like, how high it needs to go up, what all you need, but congrats.
Thank you.
So that's it.
Let's vote first. So any further discussion? Please vote. We need... We're missing one. Truckzilla?
Narcisse?
Yeah.
I only have seven.
Hit the... Hit the end vote. Still passes. Still passes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passed to approve. Yeah.
Okay.
Approved.
Item number eight.
Item number eight.
2025-4221, ZC, existing zoning R1 rural residential district, MHO and RO, proposed zoning PF public facilities district, location parcel located on the southeast side of Nampopo Road, south of LA Highway 1077, Folsom, Ward 2, District 3, .4593 acres. Petitioner Baker Donaldson, AT&amp;T, owner Margaret Christie Charbonne, Council District 3.
Staff? Staff?
I got it.
This subject property is located on our larger tract, which is zone R1 and developed with a single-family residential home. Per the petitioner's application, the reason for the request is to construct a cell tower on the property. If approved, the cell tower will need to meet minimum requirements for towers, radios, and telecommunications towers per the UDC.
Is there a representative here? I'm against this right off the bat because y'all are not close enough to my house, okay? So it's like I have a serious problem here.
Maybe we can help you out with that down the road. But for this one, hopefully we can prove... I didn't put this together. Engineers put this together, but the reason behind it is you want red or orange. Yellow's the worst. This is what it looks like right now in terms of reception in that area, and this is what they're trying to do.
I can testify to the dead zone in that area.
Oh, good. Good. This is... I love these kind of meetings. It is a proposed 245 foot with a five-foot lightning rod, self-support capable of housing up to three carriers in that area. It's a very densely wooded lot. It'll remain densely wooded. I know we've gone back and forth with staff addressing comments, revisions. Hopefully, we've got them everything we need, so we are asking for your all's approval tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Seeger.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Seeger, Commissioner Robert.
I saw you get out the car with those poster boards, and I was about to scream. I was like, oh, my God, somebody's gonna hold this up all night, but this is easy. I'd like to second.
Just kidding. Just kidding. Just totally kidding. You second? We have a motion and a second. Any... Commissioner Arsomont?
No, I'm gonna delay, sure. But could we at least get each one a tower in our area to match with the... Nah, just kidding. That's unethical. That's unethical.
If they need it, they're welcome to locate it on it. It's being built for AT&amp;T, but...
No, I was actually just gonna say that we appreciate you staying the entire night to present at the very end. That takes a lot of courage, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Have a motion to adjourn? Oh, man. I didn't see that. Old business. Ah, new business. I didn't see that. You got my homework right here. Yeah. All right, staff? What you got?
I forgot about it, too, actually.
Oh, see, it's not just me.
So there's only three amendments tonight, and we are winding down with these amendments for at least a couple months. I know I do, but I mean it this time.
Hey, we appreciate your poster boards, even though we didn't really look at them.
So the first amendment is to add definitions for civic public safety training facilities and to revise the existing definitions that we have in our current UDC for marina or boat launch facility and marina commercial. The reason behind these changes are we don't have a definition for civic, and so when police stations or fire stations want to rezone, it's always just been an administrative decision done by our director, who acts in the capacity as zoning administrator, and this way...
Is that in public use facilities?
No.
Really? Okay.
This way, we're putting in the code. It's a permitted use in pretty much every commercial zoning classification across the board.
Okay.
The reason for the change to marina or boat launch facility and marina commercial is we want to make a distinction between what a boat launch facility is, when usually allowable within a major subdivision, or a real true commercial marina. Number two is really just implementing those uses that I mentioned actually in the code. So Section 1, we're changing the definitions. Section 2, we're changing them in the permitted uses within each zoning classification. And number three is changing how our pool language reads in the UDC to say that the inside edge lip or structure of a pool is not where we're pulling the measurement from. It includes decking or coping of each swimming pool as well. We're having trouble with decking being placed within the drainage servitudes and between the edge of the pool and the fence lines, and that is it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is I don't have any speaker cards because this is not an agenda item. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak in for or against the amendments as stated? Okay. Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert?
I'm good with this. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
As amended, correct? Approved. Approved as written.
They're amended.
They are amendments, so I didn't know if I needed to say amended.
Unless you want to amend them.
Commissioner Robert... Arsomont?
Second, please.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.